7:02 PM, I will call to order this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Monday, November 3, 2025. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up today, we need to have a public hearing, so I will call to order this public hearing on the proposed tipping fees. The purpose of this hearing is to hear any public comment for the tipping fees that we will be discussing later on in the agenda. I do not see anyone here from the public. Jennifer, anything to add?
We have not received anything.
Okay. Seeing that there is no public comment, could I get a motion to please close the public hearing on proposed tipping fees? Sarah moves, Mike seconds, all in favor? Okay, hearing closed. Okay, could I get a motion for you to adjourn to executive session for the discussion of pending litigation pursuant to CGS Section 1600? Mike moves, Marcy seconds, all in favor? Okay. We will be right back.
Okay, TV 79 will resume our meeting. Could I please have a motion to adjourn the executive session and return to open session? Sarah moves, Mike seconds, all in favor? Okay. All right, first selectman's report, I'll be brief. Appreciate the passage by the RTM regarding the acquisition of the Coons parking lot. I think that'll be an important strategic acquisition for the town and allow us to preserve that important parking. I think we're waiting for the appeal or the referendum period to expire, which is the 7th, I think?
Yes.
7th. And that we are now tentatively set to close on Monday, November 17th. So at that close, following that, we will be in possession of that lot. So thanks to everybody who worked so hard to get that done. We'll be talking more about strategy for the lot going forward soon. The main thing for people to know is that nothing's going to change with the lot, at least through year end, in terms of it'll be run by a parking attendant. We'll leave the daily rates as is, and we did pass at our last meeting, as you recall, the amendments to our parking ordinances that allow us to manage the lot. So we're in good shape. But stay tuned, more to come on all that. I attended, on October 7th, an immigration panel discussion that former first selectman, Yvonne Klein, sponsored with a number of folks. Obviously, that's a contentious issue, but I appreciated her pulling everybody together to talk about that. One thing I reminded everyone gathered is that we're, at the end of the day, talking about human beings. And I think if we keep that first and foremost in our mind, that that is an easier topic for us to get our minds around and maybe less contentious. I also reminded them that, in addition to the folks caught up in immigration being human beings, there are some other human beings to keep in mind. And coming from Texas, I can tell you, I've sat in a lot of immigration meetings where everybody is on the opposite side of that issue, and they have homes and jobs and families and careers and all that, too, and they're human beings as well. I think if we recognize that everyone who's part of this debate and trying to get to a solution is motivated by the concerns as they see them, and if we treat each other accordingly, maybe we'll get to a solution on that. As you recall, on Monday, a week ago, I did a presentation to the RTM about the town's debt situation. I mentioned that in my newsletter that went out this past Friday. I think that's an important topic for everyone to engage on and to understand sources of a lot of recent increases in town debt. And if you have questions about that, I would urge you to pull up my newsletter or get the TV 79 recording of that and take a look at it. If anybody has questions about our town debt, I would be happy to answer them. But that's something that's important, and hopefully the explanation I provided was helpful. You also recall that the Board of Education provided a permanent appointment to Dr. Eric Byrne, who had been serving as the town's interim superintendent for public schools. That's a terrific appointment. If you've not met Dr. Byrne, he is absolutely amazing, and I sincerely wish him well in that role. It's a critical one for the town, and so far, it looks like we've got just a truly outstanding appointment to replace Dr. Adley. So congratulations to Dr. Byrne, his family, and to the Board of Education for a great force. That was all I had for my update today. Does anybody have any questions for me? Okay. Next up is Board Liaison Reports, Mike.
On October 8, the Blight Review Board met. There were no additional properties added to the list and no new recommendations for foreclosure. The proceedings that we have now are proceeding at the natural litigation pace, which is slow, but I think we're moving in an efficient and fair direction, and our next meeting is November 12.
Okay, thank you. Marcy?
Sure. Tuesday, October 28, Mental Health Task Force met. It was a very busy, very informative meeting. First thing on their agenda is on November 22, Darien is going to be hosting Survivor's Day at the Mather Center. Survivor's Day is a group sort of day of remembrance sponsored by the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. Darien's been one of the first communities to host this. They do it every year, right before the holidays. It's a really nice time for families that have lost someone to suicide to gather together and to kind of lean on each other for support, share stories, share memories about their loved ones, and then obviously you make a lot of connections through it. I've attended two of them, and they're phenomenal. Ally and our team does a really great job. We get people from all over the state of Connecticut because it is one of the only ones that we host, and I think there's just a lot of really great connections and stories that people will share. So if anyone has lost someone to suicide, I highly recommend. It's a really great way to sort of start off your holiday season, to get a support network together. The other thing Ally will be hosting is a QPR training. She's trying to do that every two months, which is fantastic. It's a really nice training seminar hosted by the town. What that is, is a way in which you could... Next one is on December 8, 12:30 to 2, and again, it's here in Ten Hall, I believe she's doing, at the Mather Center. And it's a quick training on how you can recognize somebody who has suicide allegation, some of the warning signs, some ways to get somebody help immediately, some ways to combat stigmatism that goes along with suicide allegation and offer hope. So definitely suggest anybody to come home and do that. If there's college kids that are around, it's 18 and over, so if they're back from school, it's a really good opportunity for them to get training as well. And the last thing that's happening is November is actually Men's Mental Health Month. Men over the age of 25 are now one of the fastest-growing population of people struggling with mental health disorders. So Wave Strong has putting together a 30-for-30, which is 30 push-ups in a matter of 30 days. You post it on Instagram, kind of like the Ice Bucket Challenge that they did years ago. There's been a lot of great people in town who are participating in it, some Board of Education members, some coaches. I think the new superintendent participated. I think John is going to be participating in it. So anybody in the community who wants to get involved, I highly recommend. It's a great way to flex your muscles.
So it was 30 push-ups, 30 days, so I did one push-up on the first.
Oh, geez.
No, it's 30 per day. Oh, yes.
Working on it. You're in training. You've got to get stronger, John.
I'm doing 30 per day, and so I've made that. Here we are, day three. No hospitalization required.
Yeah, Mike, seems like there's a lot of room in this, too.
Did I miss the start date, though?
You could do 60 and catch up. There were a lot of sore people around town, I think, yesterday morning after they did their November 1 challenge. But definitely a great way to get involved, to raise awareness and to, you know, get your family members and your friends involved. So it's a great thing for Wave Star to get involved in.
Come in.
All right, go ahead.
Negatively affects my pickleball.
Okay, terrific. Monica?
No updates.
No updates, okay. Sarah?
No updates for Darien. Their next meeting is in November. The Henley-Homerson Royal Building Committee met last on October 15. Things are going well right now. The schools are all in Phase 2B. The main remainder of the work, with the exception of the addition at Royal, is now interior work. HVAC works continuing and so forth. Things are going well. Right now, we're doing well financially. We've got about 70% of the projects completed. Construction contingency accounts still have about 20%, 30% left, and the owner contingency accounts are still largely untouched. So the schools are compiling, rather, the principals of the schools are compiling lists of kind of wish lists of items that if there was money left to be able to be allocated to these items, they're putting them together, and then the committee will go through and determine which items we would be considering.
Terrific.
But things are going well. Next meeting is on November 19.
Okay, outstanding. All right, Jennifer, did we get any public comments by email?
No, we did not.
Okay, no public comments today. All right, new business. Discuss and take action on a request to approve new tipping fees. Mr. Gentile. Good evening.
What I had presented to the board in the form of this memo, there were two items in particular I was looking to take care of, and one of them we had addressed back in October and July of '22, '23, the MSW tipping fee. That was one of the items there. And as I was putting this together, and then let me say, the second one was something we hadn't looked at before, which was the construction debris, brush, and leaves. So I put them both in this memo. I struggled with how to roll it out to you folks and get you as much information so you could make an informed decision, but I also wanted to tell a little bit of a story, too. I wanted to give you some information on when was the last time, what does it do, how does it compare to the contract, what are you going to see in the future. And I hope I was able to capture that without confusing you. There's quite a few tables in there, trying to put together information that shows you, MSW, for instance, how it's grown over the last three or four years. Just so you know, we are projecting for FY '26, a 33% increase. We sit right now, after the first quarter, 450, 500 tons more than we were at this point last year. So that was another item that I was able to run a model on to see what our projections would look like after we were done with it. So with the MSW fee and the current contract that we had, 118 needed to be adjusted, in my opinion, and I did that with my request to bump it to 125. You could see some of the other towns in the Table B. They came after our adjustment to 118. We now are, or I am actually, is requesting to take it to 125, which would be the highest of the areas right now in comparison to Norwalk and Stanford. So that's Part 1 of the memo. Part 2 addresses items that we hadn't done or hadn't taken care of or looked at since 2005. And generally, because they're all driven by the CPI and the increases were very small for most of the time, even one year, and actually, the number went backwards. It was reduced. That would be the cost charged to us by city carding at that time and wind waste now. So I did put in Table C, wind waste contractual numbers, and you'll see the jump between '24 and '25 happens to be the change in the new contract. '26, I showed you what it would be predicted for this year, and we're running those numbers right now. And you'll see highlighted in yellow, I hope you guys have it in color.
Yep.
The request to increase and change those C and D brush and leaves to 140, 95, and 85. Table D is the important one. It shows you the current fee charged for haulers to dump or drop off at our site and the proposed fee that I've asked to have it changed to and the percentage of increase. The revenue increase is using our current tonnages that have come through from our haulers and showing you a projection of about the $83,000 increase. Now, what you don't have and don't see, because I ran different models with this to see if we were catching up to the two years that we had held steady. And what you saw is about $106,000 increase to wind waste. This 83 catches up to that. If I throw in the additional 33%, we're closer to 90, 95. So we're actually carrying the same differential, if you will. Their increase and our increase is actually about the same rate, which I thought was a good place to start with a request. I do take into consideration, when I ask for these increases, that these haulers, landscapers, whoever that bring the material to us, the garbage haulers, the contractors, they are going to pass these costs on to our residents. So I still looked at it and tried to be fair about it, too, at the same time. And finally, Table E, and I think this is an important factor. If you look at the last, generally, if you look at the last six years, you'll see that we are continually to increase to cover our expenses with the revenues. We're almost up to 80%, which means 20% is subsidized by taxpayers. I wanted to show you that because I'm trying to keep that number. I'm trying to get it to build up a little closer to 90%. But if you look at the number as a whole, $400,000, it's a large gap to try to take a bite out of in one shot without impacting our taxpayers and our residents.
I've got, this is very helpful. I've got three questions. In Table A, it goes from, this is tonnage by haulers. In 2019, it was 248 tons. That has grown by 14 times to 3,682 tons in fiscal '25. So you talk about this all being trash from local residents or contractors working for local residents. Is that possibly true, that that's all coming from Darien or mostly from Darien activity, that that's grown by 14 times since 2019?
It's supposed to be. But if I had to venture a guess, we are probably taking garbage into our site from other towns locally or close by. There really is no other place for the haulers in this area to bring their MSW to. Wheel of Brader, as we talked about before, in Bridgeport, has shut down taking new customers or new additions to their intakes on a daily basis. Hartford has now shut down their incinerator. City Carding has a very small floor in Stanford. We're basically, in comparison, they have 1,000-ton capacity. We have a 5,000-ton capacity floor. So we can take on a daily basis up to 5,000 tons. And I see some of City Carding's numbers where they have to shut down their facility, and they basically are paying us to store their garbage, or the MSW, so they'll take it off-site the following day or the next day, whenever they fill up those compactors.
Is there a way to differentiate pricing between commercial enterprises hauling trash for Darien residents or businesses versus outsiders?
Well, as far as the hauler goes, you would have, I would have to determine how much the MSW or garbage coming in, and that hauler is actually from a Darien resident. And I would venture a guess that there may be times where some of the haulers may not be very forthcoming, those numbers being true.
Do you think it's because we're undercharging so much, too, that they're also coming to Darien?
If you look at 19, 20, 21, we were charging a lot more than anyone in the area. So they were finding other places to go. As you see, in '22, we started to kind of break even, so they were coming to us. When we bumped it up in '22, you could see it dropped in '23 to just 1,000. Now, they basically have no place to go. It is easy on, easy off of I-95. We have the facility, we easy in and out. It's just, I'd say it's a preference right now, and they will be passing the cost increase on to whoever their customers are.
Second question. In Table B, do you have a sense for how much this tonnage has changed in these other locations there? In other words, did they go up 14 times, or was it all pretty flat? And could you see it shifting from these places to us? Do you have visibility into that?
If I had the numbers, but I don't have the numbers to determine that. I can tell you, the costs in those four locations, in speaking to some of the folks that run it, Stanford in particular, the costs were going up.
Right.
Wind waste renegotiated all their contracts pretty much with these folks. So we had the same battles and the same flots as we did MSW, single-stream recycling and so on, with city carding, wind waste, over the last three or four years, the other four towns included, towns and cities included.
My last question is in Table E. So in fiscal '19, the revenue was $855,603, and we've increased the tipping fees since then. And so now we've got revenue in fiscal '25 of $1,574. So that's good. My question is, is that that revenue increased by less than 2X. But in Table A, the tonnage increased by 14 times from fiscal '19. So how can it be that revenue only increased by 2X, even with price increases, but tonnage went up by 14 times over that time?
That revenue number is all of the commodities coming into the transfer station, not just MSW. So there were times when we had some larger storms where the brush number was up over $200, $300,000, just in revenue. That will drive a lot of these numbers.
So if you broke out, well, if you broke out the revenue, let's just see here. So, sorry, 3682 times $118 a ton. That's $434,000 in fiscal '25 at the current 118 rate. So you're saying, basically, a million dollars, $1,000,000 of the revenue is other than MSW? Is that a fair statement?
That's probably accurate, sure. And it's brush, it's leaves, it's combustible, which is construction debris. And they run cyclical with some of these, and you'll see some of the years are a little odd all that way. But you'll see, when we start changing the rates, how, and I showed you before, how it impacts the tonnage, and then all of a sudden, it jumps back, starts to jump back up again. Other towns now are starting to charge as much as we were. So they're going to come back. That's exactly what happened the last couple of years.
All right. So in fiscal '25, it says 3,682 tons. We made $434,000. That's fine. But it says that $1,000,100 is coming from other than municipal solid waste. I'm assuming it's single-stream recycling, it's brushes, leaves, it's other stuff besides MSW.
Correct.
So what's the weight of all of that? And I'm just wondering whether we have a, we're getting anywhere closer to capacity? Because if the $434,000, if that's taking up 3,682 tons of capacity, daily of capacity, I guess, all right, I guess, this is actual tonnage for the year, but you're saying you have capacity of 5,000 tons a day?
Per day.
And that's, so the 3,682 tons, that's all of the commercial MSW for the entire year?
For the year, yeah. That's just from the haulers. We have the residents bringing theirs in, too. So if you put that on top, I think we had almost 5,200 this year, total.
So you actually have $1,300,000 tons of capacity a year, 52 weeks times five days a year, call it that? I mean...
We have a lot.
Okay, all right, that's clear. All right, I get it. Thank you. I'm okay with this. I mean, this was Monica's original idea two years ago, was to build in something where we would keep pace with what we're being charged to dispose all this. So I applaud that. A great idea. And I think trying to get it closer to 90% when it's clear that there's a lot of all-in coming from outside the area, if the tonnage is increased by that kind of factor, also seems to make sense, but it's not an overamount. I'm okay with these proposed fee changes. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I have a couple to add. So, yeah, I was looking at the same thing John was looking at, the tonnage, and I was trying to figure out, I thought MSW was a bigger percentage. So I was surprised there. I'm kind of wondering, the margin on your brush and your leaves, it's pretty high compared to MSW and what they're charging us and what we're charging. Why is this, what's the spread? Why is it so high? Do we want to dissuade brush and leaves?
Well, I think, first, we haven't adjusted those numbers in 20 years, first. Second, we handle the brush and leaves ourselves. A lot of it is our equipment, moving it, loading it. Where the MSW is, they dump it into the hopper, and they pack it into a truck, and they haul it away. So I'm, and I'm not going to speak for my predecessor, but my thought was, he had envisioned our labor forces making the need for us to charge a little bit more for those items.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay. Okay, now, we, a couple of years ago, we changed the MSW rate, and we also changed the recyclable. I don't see recyclable in here. Are you trying to get on a schedule for all of it? And if so, where does recycling fit in on this?
We charge...
Is 70?
50? No, it says a 75. And we're currently paying 75
Right.
with an added rebate at the end of every month, based on paper products. Little, I'd say it's something that you, I had to learn about. So this year, we were hitting somewhere around $50 a ton after the rebate. So we were making $25 a ton back out of the charges. So I thought that was still a good place to be and no need to adjust.
Okay. And so the contract with City is for, you did it in '24, and it was for five years?
It's for five years. So July of 2029, there'll either have to be an extension or a new contract negotiated.
So do you see between now and then, we take another look at this, or are you anticipating that this, these numbers will hold until '29?
If you folks are here in two years, you'll see me again.
Okay, so your cadence is like every two years?
I think that's what you had asked for when you were first selectman. I think it's a good idea to every other year, just take a peek at it. This one's a little bit longer, but in two years, you'll be back showing you what numbers need to be adjusted again. The MSW is going to continue to go up at 3%. We should at least chase that a little bit.
Okay, okay. Great, this is helpful.
This is very good. Other questions, Fred?
Thank you. I'm also curious to see if other surrounding towns are having an increase in what they're getting, just for the sake of curiosity, right? Is it just everybody's throwing more stuff out, or is it truly Darien is kind of a hotspot to throw yourself out in?
I mean, I don't want to blame development, but there's a lot of that. I know Stanford's got hit hard with additional MSW handling, but I know Darien now has just put in quite a few units.
That's right.
Four different locations.
Okay. Yeah, I forgot.
And so, Ed, since we are actually on the MSW anyhow, making something, you don't think that this number will have a negative impact on the volume, right?
Not if you compare it to the two closest towns, Stanford and Norwalk. I think we're, Norwalk's 125, Stanford's 123, and we're asking, I'm asking 125.
And are they looking at changing theirs, do you know?
I do not know that.
Reviewing?
He wasn't giving that up.
Okay.
Ed, last question. Do you have any reminders for residents in terms of how they're handling their general garbage versus recycling, what you should be recycling versus not, and whether having more care in managing all that would be helpful?
Let's talk about the three aspects of MSW. There's stuff that should be in there. There's recycling that we should still be recycling. The state requires it. We should still be doing it. There is savings for the town. I don't know if the haulers are actually providing a discount if they come and collect the recycling for them, but we should still be doing that as aggressively as we possibly can. And then finally, there's the food scraps. That's important. That carries the majority of the weight that's in garbage. And if there's anything we can do with that number, that brings down our costs.
It's heavy. Okay. Any other questions, Fred? Okay, could I get a motion to approve the new tipping fees as presented? Sarah moves, Monica seconds, all in favor? Okay, Ed, thank you.
Thank you very much. In the letter, it says it'll be implemented January 1 of this year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, discuss and take action on the proposed 2026 meeting calendar.
This calendar sticks with our approach that we talked about a few meetings ago, with one meeting in person, one meeting in Zoom, but the understanding that if we have any meaty issues or something complex that we need to discuss, we'll make that a in-person meeting. Right now, we are looking at the same number of budget review sessions. I believe we heard, I heard a request to change the budget review sessions to February 9, 10, and 11. 9, 10, and 11. The draft had them on the 2nd, 3rd, and 4th. The schedule avoids school holidays or school breaks, religious holidays, Rosh Hashanah, Yom Kippur, and that's it, I think.
Yep. And did we want to try to adjust the Zoom versus in-person cadence a little bit on this? Or would, where?
The question had been raised about the meeting the night before the joint department head meeting, but I think that we settled on keeping it as is.
Keeping it as is, okay. All right. Questions on the calendars? That work for everybody?
So we will change the budget meetings to the following week?
9, 10, and 11.
And that's not full, that's not February 3rd?
No, it's the following.
Okay.
And then the department head and the night before, the night before will continue to be Zoom?
Right.
And the department head will be in person.
Will be in person.
Okay. I'm okay with that. If those agendas are live, we can cancel those Zoom meetings as well, so, and move a couple items to the department head meeting if it's just one or two things. Is this okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. Could I get a motion to approve the 2026 Board of Selectmen regular meeting calendar as amended? Mike Moose, Marcy Seconds, all in favor? Okay, great.
Jen, can you just send this out back to everybody?
Yeah, the final, yeah, that way.
Their own calendars. Okay.
Plug it in.
Next item, discuss and take possible action to amend the number of members on the Pear Tree Point Building Committee. I'd like to propose that we go into new business to modify that agenda slightly, to take into account modifications to the charge of the building committee, as opposed to just the membership. So could I get a motion to add new business? Mike Moose, Sarah Seconds, all in favor? Okay. So now that we're discussing this, the idea here would be to modify the charter to that committee. Monica, you have that in mind, do you care to discuss that modification?
Right now, the charge says that it shall consist of seven members appointed by the Board of Selectmen, five shall come from the public, but one must have experience in the building trades, construction management, and/or architecture. I think we felt that that was, didn't need to be spelled out. That is what we would, in general, require anyhow. And the five members from the public is a little bit confusing as, when we take a look at what we're looking at as far as if people are elected officials or not. So I think we decided to strike that sentence.
Okay. I'm good with that. Is any questions or comments on that? Okay, could I get a motion to approve the change to the Pear Tree Point Building Committee Charter? Sarah Moose, Monica Seconds, all in favor? Okay, good. And then we have a list of folks that we want to, no, that's not up next. This is just to amend that. So any other questions or issues on the Pear Tree Point Building Committee Charter? Okay, moving on. Next item is to discuss and take action to approve the settlement of a tax appeal. We have discussed that in the executive session. Could I get a motion to approve the settlement for Dean and Aaron Bellissimo versus the Town of Darien, tax appeal for 38 Weaver Lane in the amount of $5,700,000? Sarah Moose, Mike Seconds, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay, next item is to appoint members to the Pear Tree Point Building Committee, which we tabled from the October 21 meeting. Marcy?
So I had the opportunity to talk to a couple of applicants, and one of the goals that we wanted to make sure is, we did want to be certain that we had somebody who had some building expertise on this committee, and we wanted to make sure that we had a resident that represented. So that's how we came to the conclusion of a few of the members that we've selected. So I think we're already pretty set.
Okay. So what we would be doing is, we're appointing members to this committee. Their term would be until that committee wraps up its work, which is technically scheduled for May, June of next year, something like that. Would you care to go through the names of the seven individuals we will be appointing?
Sure. So I would be Marcy Minnick, representing the Board of Selectmen. Millen Gassrude, how do you go?
Gassrude.
Gassrude, from the Board of Finance. Terry Bach from Park and Rec. Sandy Savage from the RTM, Park and Rec's department. Marty Masterson, he is a member of the Darien Boat Club. We have Peter Doring, who's a citizen, and Bob Lyons, who's also a citizen.
Okay. I am fine with all that. This provides us, I think, with some great expertise. Peter Doring has a lot of building expertise and harbor property experience. Marty Masterson is a dredging expert. I think it's important to have a resident. Mr. Lyons lives on Pear Tree Point Road, and we've got good representation from the bodies of elected officials, so I feel like this is a very good mix. I really appreciate these individuals stepping up to help us with this important committee. It's outside of the schools. This is the largest town project, and certainly the largest parks project in quite some time, so it'll be important to get it right. So thank you to all of you. We'll pass along the amended charter to that group, and they will be voting to set a meeting schedule and get started on this project right away, so...
Yeah, I will get in touch with everybody in the next couple of days.
And we'll have a formal letter go out of this office here to make sure that their appointment is taken down in writing. Jennifer, we left anything out?
Uh, no.
Okay, could I get a motion to approve these seven members of the Pear Tree Point Building Committee, as just read by Marcy Minnick? Sarah Moose, Monica Seconds, all in favor? Okay, great. We have our Pear Tree Point Building Committee. All right, we've got some minutes to approve. First minutes are for our meeting for October 6, 2025. I actually have an edit to that, so this is right after the Pledge of Allegiance. It says, motion to move up the first selectman's report, the presentation, that should read, move up the first selectman's report ahead of the traffic signals and paving presentation. It was late coming to the meeting. I'd further propose that we move my first selectman's report up ahead of that, just in the order in the minutes, but otherwise, these minutes looked fine, and I can pass these edits on to Lyndon. Does anyone else have any edits or corrections to the October 6 minutes? Motion to approve the October 6 minutes as amended. Sarah Moose, Mike Seconds, all in favor? Okay. We had very short minutes for our department head meeting the other day, which included tabling the Pear Tree Point Building Committee. That's very short and looks fine to me. Any edits to those minutes? Okay, could I get a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen on October 21st? Sarah Moose, Monica Seconds, all in favor? Okay. Our minutes are approved. Agenda review. So left turn rain lane at Norton Avenue and Ledge Road, I will have something on that at the next meeting. Question, we've got down there, approach for bike and scooter safety. We've talked about that a few times, the chief presented to us. What further action or discussion would we like to have on that topic? Or have we exhausted that for now? Is there something further you want to?
I don't, I think this will be a topic in perpetuity at this point.
Was there still conversation of putting together a pedestrian safety committee?
Yes.
I don't know about a pedestrian safety committee. We are doing a pedestrian infrastructure committee, which will be sidewalk, largely sidewalk focused.
Okay.
But we don't have a committee to address bike and scooter safety, which personally my preference, if we're going to do something like that, I'd rather the professionals come in and tell us what they want to do for that, just because it, I think, requires some specialized experience with all of that, as well as knowledge of state regulations and all of that, as opposed to having citizens try to come up and reinvent the wheel. So if we did it, I'd look to the Police Commission as our legal traffic authority to give us a sense as to what they want to do.
I agree.
Maybe as a next step, what I'll do is try to get on a future Police Commission agenda and just press this point and try to get a better articulation of what we could further do. There's been suggestions of a variety of things, ranging from training programs. We've had those for some teenagers, I think, at the depot, which was well-received, by the way. We could have the same thing for adults. I gave a talk at the Cub Scout meeting at the scout kind of headquarters over on West Avenue yesterday, and we were, I was asked a question about all of that, and I stressed the need for kids to be aware of what they were doing. But there were a lot of parents there, too, and I said, by the way, none of these kids would have these expensive scooters unless parents were buying them. And so my request to all of them is that, look, if your kid has one of these, you need to lay down the law in terms of where they can ride them, whether they can be modified and all of that, and if they cross the line on that, you need to take it away. But that's, that has to be our first and foremost defense against this, or resolution to this particular problem. It really has to come from parents. There's only so much town authorities can do in that regard, if parents are not going to do their part to help manage that. So anything we can do to help provide guidance on that, I mean, we certainly could. But ultimately, these are children, and this is a parental responsibility.
I think as these conversations continue to some way involve representatives from the schools, they might have something useful to say.
So that's a very good point. I've already spoken with the superintendent a couple of times, and he's been involved in some meetings on this. And so maybe having him come to the Police Commission meeting as well and say, look, we're all kind of gathered here. We got the town, we got the police, we've got superintendent. Let's talk about and make sure that we've captured learnings from what other towns are doing to have best practice town and school responses to this, and just document that we've done that. So fair point, we'll keep that on our list. All right. Upcoming meetings, we've got Monday, November 17th, which will be by Zoom, and then Monday, December 1st, which will be here in room 206. I think that's it for our agenda, unless anyone has anything else? Okay, we're all set. Could I get a motion to adjourn? Sarah Moose, Mike Seconds, all in favor? We stand adjourned at 8:26 PM. Thank you, friends.